I will now call to June 17, 2013, Blue Springs City Council Meeting in Order. If you would stand, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you into the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I welcome you to tonight's city council meeting, and also to those that might be watching on cable TV 7. The next item is a consent agenda. There are items that need to be pulled. If not, I will accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a public hearing on Adams Dairy Senior Community PUD Concept Plan.
Your Honor, I'd like to introduce exhibits on behalf of the city for public hearing PUDC 5-13-3950. Exhibit includes city council information form with attachments, staff report with attachments, affidavit of publication, as advertised in Blue Springs Examiner, May 25, 2013, application with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, and copy of letter sent to the property owners. These are all the exhibits they have to offer on behalf of the city.
Okay. Mr. Hawley, on behalf of the city?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight is a request for approval of a PUD Concept Plan entitled Adams Dairy Senior Community PUD. Many of you will recognize this property. It's located on the west side of Adams Dairy Parkway, south of our demise, and north and east of Napoleon Drive. This property at one time had a proposal for a mixed-use residential, or I'm sorry, mixed-use office and commercial development. And at that time, one key thing is that they had requested access to Adams Dairy Parkway. You will see in this development that that request is not being made. They don't need that access. This particular property is approximately 13.6 acres, and the developer is proposing to subdivide the property into four lots. Lot 1 is located just south of our demise. It is the property right here, and the intent for that property is to use it for stormwater detention and open space for the development. Lot 2 is the primary focus of this particular application. That is the PUD. It's approximately an eight-acre site, and they are intending to put the senior housing facility. This facility has 148 units. They'll do it in two phases. The first phase involves, let's see if we have this, 76 units of independent living, independent senior living, and that will go in this area here. And I believe the architect will talk a little bit more about that. They will also are proposing 32 memory units, and those would be located in this area. And then in Phase 2, which they are hoping follows fairly quickly after Phase 1, this area, depending on the demand for the memory units, may be memory units, and it also may be assisted living senior housing. The other two lots are located in this area here. Both are approximately two acres, just a little bit over two acres. And the hope for those is that they would be used for a medical office, but they would be open based on the zoning for either retail or office-type uses. So that's kind of a, they aren't sure how that will go just yet. Staff, the planning commission heard this item last week, and unanimously provided a recommendation for approval. Staff also recommends approval with 14 conditions, and those conditions are provided in your council information form. And with that, I'll stand for any questions?
Are there any questions, Ms. Hawley? Any questions from council? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward, be sworn in?
My name is Denise Matheson, and I'm the Director of Operations and Development for O'Reilly Development. Have Springfield, Missouri. We're not only the developers, but also the, will be the owners of the property. We will retain ownership and operations of the property. We are proposing a continuum of care community for seniors. And as Jim stated, there's 148 units. The 76 independent living units are, we call it lodge-style apartment living, if you will. They are, as he showed you, that Y. We're gonna, it's a three-story elevator building. This is an architectural concept drawing of what it would look like. We have lots of reviews that we have to go through before it's finalized, but it gives you an idea what that building will look like. And that is the first step, independent living. So that is the intended for those that are giving up their homes and really just want to live in a maintenance-free environment. But in addition to that, they'll have full amenities. There'll be a commercial kitchen with a private dining area, so they can get meals if they want. It's not required, and it's not included in their rent. The units are completely furnished, full kitchens, washer-dryers. We have a mix of studios, one-bedrooms and two-bedroom units. So they can live as independently as they like, or they can live as involved and catered to as they'd like also. There will be a full-service salon there. There's exercise room, libraries. There's a theater room. There's den areas. We also always purchase a transportation bus, so there's transportation for those that need it, to doctor's appointments, to Walmart, to wherever they need to go, so they can, they can schedule that with the front desk. In addition to that, then the next step, like I said, this is a continuum of care community, so it's expected to be their home for life. It's a very difficult decision to make, to give up your home and go into a different community and develop the new relationships there. So our philosophy is, is after they make that first decision, that they, and they start becoming a part of a new community with their friends and get settled, that they can stay there, that it's the last, last home that they have to adjust to. Now, we have different levels, so at the independent stage of it, again, they're very independent, they're still active, but as their health deteriorates, there is then the option for the assisted living and the memory care units. But you don't have to lose, leave the community, the people that they're used to working with and associating with. A lot of times, one of the adults is in worse condition or deteriorating condition as opposed to the others, so they can stay in the same community. So that is the 32-unit memory care is in the first phase. This, it is a single-story building community, and it's kind of a courtyard concept. It is a courtyard concept, no kind of, excuse me. And as Jim said, this is the 32-unit memory care side of it. It is completely enclosed and secure for obvious reasons. There's security and wandering issues. So it's completely, the building itself circles around a courtyard. And then inside is an open-air courtyard, and it has plants in it, it has sitting areas, sidewalks. It's places for family to come visit and get them outdoors. It's really important that they have the ability to be outside. In that part of the development, we also have a commercial kitchen and a dining area there. There's also a private dining when family comes in, so that they can have time to themselves. There are nurses stations, wellness centers, there's learning stations. One of the things that we found with the memory-challenged residents is just any activity that helps remind them of what they used to do, like a typewriter, an office station. We have that, and it just reminds them of what they used to do. We have daycare or a nursery station, too. They'll sit in the rocker, they'll play with the infant. They'll, it just is a reminder that triggers the nurturing that they've done all of their lives. Outside each one of their units, we have what we call is a memory box, and in that, we keep pieces that are important to them and triggers of who they were and what their life has been about, and helps them stay acclimated to the right, right area of the facility. Our second phase, which, as Jim said, we hope will continue directly behind it, is very similar. It's the same design as the memory care, and it is 40 units, again with the courtyard. Our hope is that there's, we find that there's a demand for the assisted living, so we will have all phases of the continuum of care community. It'll either be memory care or assisted living. The assisted living is different from the memory care because there is not the dementia associated at that level. The memory care and assisted living require a certificate of need application with the Department of Health. We have already filed that. We thank the mayor and other members of the community for the support letter on that, and we actually go before their board on the 8th, so we will know that we have been approved. Let me just be positive about it, and that's when we'll have the approval for that. With our final zoning approval on the PUD, the CON application approval, that will be the last of our contingencies, and then we will move forward to purchase the ground in early August. We will start our development and our design stage and hope to start construction the end of the year. Any que, and I have Tim Wilson with SWD Architects, who has done the design, worked with us on numerous projects, so if you have any specific questions as to the design.
Are there any questions from council?
Councilman? Your Honor, pardon me. I was there when you presented this to the planning commission. My understanding is there's only one other facility like this in the Kansas City area? Is that correct?
That has all three, that's the continuum of care? I'm sorry, my, our operator has done the market study, so I would, I will tell you that we feel our, our concept in our community is unique, and they're very, they are very limited, especially with the memory care unit, so I would say that's probably a correct thing.
And 55 is the age limit for moving in?
Well, it's 55, but it's 55 or 62, but it's a senior, it's age-restrictive. The average age of our residents is 70 to 74 when they take that first step.
Well, my basement flooded over the weekend. I'm five years and three months away from being 55, so I'm just trying to plan ahead for the future. But on a serious note, I will say they've already gotten a letter from a constituent whose mom has Alzheimer's, and she wants you to break ground tomorrow.
Oh, I have to say, we've had unconditional support from the staff, from the departments, from the community. I held a neighborhood meeting. I had two people there, and they both came to make sure that if anybody was a naysayer, they were there to stand up and vote against that, so.
Councilman?
Yes, I just have a quick question about the lot to the north. I saw in the paperwork there was a patio going to be on that. Is that correct? Is that intended to be used as part of your program?
We, there is a, under the Adams Dairy overlay, there is required green space and outdoor space, as you're all aware of. So we added this lot into this development for two reasons. There's a lot of detention that's gonna happen there, and the access and the likelihood of ever selling that off is very slim to, probably not going to happen. So what we did is we created green space, and then we did a connective trail to the existing city walkway trail. And that patio, we just thought if there's benches or something there, that when people are walking, they can sit down, rest, especially our residents. They'll probably use that more than they would the city-long trail.
Right, thank you.
Any others?
I have a question. On the independent living part of it, do you have you to have designated areas for them to still have their cars, and is that covered or just outside parking?
It is just outside parking. I don't, do we show any covered?
We do have, we've hashed in here for carports in these areas here. And with the independent living, we have the primary access from these parking areas here where the carports are noted.
We always try to target the independent living parking with a second entrance into those wings versus going through the main lobby area for just that reason, for the ones that have cars. On an average, it's about 50% that come with cars, that need the cars. So that will be kind of private, it'll be designated parking, yes. And then the rest, this parking down here, I know it looks like it's far away, and it's a lot. And number one, we have parking requirements, but it's a back access, and it will be used mainly for the employees and the service people.
Good, thank you. Any other questions, council? If not, thank you for the presentation, and I think it's something that's much needed in this community.
Great, thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of, in the audience? Mr. Stern?
I do. Brian Stern of Blue Springs Economic Development Corporation. Since I first became aware of this project, I've had the opportunity to work with O'Reilly Development. And one of the things that we've done is try, in this specific case, to identify opportunities with the University of Missouri that might provide an overlap and a connection as we've worked on the Missouri Innovation Park. And to roll back the clock a little bit, probably two and a half, three years ago, the University of Missouri identified things related to senior care, senior needs, including working with St. Mary's Medical Center as an area of focus. So about a month ago, I joined with Todd Pelham and the O'Reilly Development Team, and we, and their architect, and went down to the University of Missouri, and Steve Wyatt, who we've been working with for quite some time, set up a series of meetings. And although I can't tell you today what specifically has come out of it, I think you all know, and I hear about this quite frequently, there is a demand for this type of care and facility. And I just want to let you know that I think we're off to a really good start with a corporate partner that seems to be bringing something to our community that's not only needed, but that could be a fit within the Adams Dairy Parkway corridor, and with hopefully not only the community centers, you consider that concept, but the Missouri Innovation Park. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Stern? Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of, in favor of, in opposition to? Opposition to? We'll close this public hearing. Would anyone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4255, an ordinance approving the Adams Dairy Senior Community PUD Concept Plan. Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
There's a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4255, an ordinance approving the Adams Dairy Senior Community PUD Concept Plan.
Move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
There's a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4433.
Okay. Next, we have a presentation from the Parks Funding Initiative. We have Park Director Dennis Dovell, and he'll be joined by Deanna McLean, Chairman of the Park Commission, and a number of park commissioners sitting in the audience with white shirts on and name tags.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the opportunity to present for consideration a potential dedicated park funding source. As requested by City Council on April 29, and with the resolution on May 6, the Park Commission has spent the last month reviewing information and meeting with community groups to develop a recommended, to present the recommended funding this evening. In order to understand how we are, how we are here today, we must take a look at what has occurred over the last 15 to 20 years that has led up to today's presentation. Out of the blue and into the future was a strategic plan that was developed in 1998, which identified at that time consideration of a sales tax for parks. Also in May of 2006, renewed the blue as a second strategic plan that was implemented by the city, addressed four specific areas related to parks. The development of a community center, enhanced cultural activities, expansion of parks, and expansion of senior transportation. Also in 2006, the citizen survey was completed, which the community center was identified as a top priority by the citizens. Over the last year, the staff has conducted park assessments of our park facilities related to deferred maintenance. As of today, we've identified over $15.5 million in deferred maintenance needs within our park system. That doesn't include some specific areas such as ballfield lights and a few other facilities, but that's where we're at as far as what we've been able to assess today. Also in November of 2013, we had a joint work session with our Park Commission and City Council. And we'll talk a little bit further about some of the outcomes that came from that here in a minute. But also through this past eight months, we've conducted the community center feasibility study, and again, a resolution was presented on May 6 by City Council for the Park Commission to look at recommending funding on the community center as well as deferred park maintenance and future park development. As mentioned, a joint work session was held with City Council and the Park Commission last November. The five outcomes resulted from this session led by our third-party consultant were distinguish Blue Springs as a leader in parks and recreation, develop public education efforts and community outreach programs, identify and implement funding necessary to achieve identified objectives, continue current partnerships and develop new ones to enhance programs and services, and plan for future to maintain existing facilities and programs, develop new offerings and innovations in the area of parks and recreation. Recently, the 2013 citizen survey results were presented. The results indicated that within parks, the most emphasis should be placed upon maintaining, maintenance of parks and walking and biking path expansion and maintenance. As well as support for projects being considered by City Council showed that maintenance funds for existing parks at 70% and resources to support the Missouri Innovation Park at 65% support within the community. With the location of the community center being at the MIP location, it fits into the resources to assist the development taking off. The community center project was not part of the survey due to the feasibility study already being conducted at that time. However, previously, two citizen surveys listed as a top priority by the residents. One funding mechanism for parks being used by communities is the statewide parks and stormwater sales tax. In 1998, the Missouri Legislature passed a bill allowing communities to enact a vote, to vote on a sales tax dedicated to local parks. According to the Missouri Parks and Recreation Association, the statewide studies by other communities have shown up to 60% of the revenue can be collected from sales by non-residents. Also, through a state sales tax, funding for parks improvements is not funded entirely by residents through this type of funding mechanism, but by individuals who visit your community. And then currently, 26 of our top 30 communities by population have a dedicated park sales tax. This slide demonstrates those communities as well as park property taxes that some of the communities hold. This, that, beyond the previous chart, 75 communities out of the top 100 communities have passed a sales tax for their local parks. These communities exist of, from residents of 7,700 and greater. Of those 75 communities that have passed a local park sales tax, 74 currently still have that tax in place. Also, of those communities that have a dedicated local park sales tax, 78% of them have a sales tax for perpetuity. However, let's take a closer look at the top 30 communities by population. Specifically, St. Joe, Missouri, the eighth-largest city, St. Charles, Missouri, the ninth-largest city, Blue Springs, Missouri, the 10th-largest city, and Wildwood, Missouri, the 17th-largest city. The common thread is these four communities out of the top 30 do not have a dedicated local park sales tax. But two of the communities have dedicated park funding. St. Joseph, Missouri, has a dedicated property tax as well as casino revenue, as well as St. Charles has a dedicated property tax for parks and casino revenue as well. Blue Springs and Wildwood are the only two communities in the top 30 of the population without any type of dedicated park funding source. Wildwood, Missouri, has only been incorporated as a community since 1995. So the Park Commission over the last month has taken on several action steps in developing the proposal. Starting on April 29, the council requested the commission to provide funding recommendations. Then on May 1, at the Park Commission meeting, the Park Commission reviewed the needs and established a list of community groups to meet with. They also discussed funding options, potential election dates, reviewed park-desired standards, reviewed outcomes of the joint work session, and reviewed deferred maintenance needs. Then on May 15 and May 20, they met individually with community groups, and on May 28, they held a special meeting to specifically discuss a proposed funding recommendation to present to City Council. The Park Commission met with 10 different community groups that utilize the park system heavily. Each of these groups presented the commission with their needs and were provided information on the desire to establish a dedicated funding source to address the construction of a community recreation center, deferred park maintenance, and future park land development. The groups were asked if they would support such an initiative, and all indicated they would. All 10 of the organizations have provided the commission with letters of support as of today. We've also asked the sports groups to provide us the number of kids that they serve annually, including, excluding the girls' softball program, which we did not receive their numbers as of today. Utilizing the 2010 U.S. Census Information for Families, the average family size for Blue Springs is 3.1. When you put the numbers of the number of participants that these organizations have participating in their events, 13,390 individuals are being touched by the groups excluding softball, which translates into about 10,585 residents being touched by the softball groups, or the sports groups, I'm sorry. The Park Commission is made up of nine appointed community members, three from each district. Those members are Richard Meacham, Keith Hanneman, and Jennifer Splodor from District 3, Bill Landrum, Vice Chairman, Jack Gilliland, and Maureen Johnson from District 2, and Deanna McLean, Park Commission Chairman, George Deibert, and Michael Parker from District 1. I'm now gonna have Deanna McLean, our Parks Chairman, come up and present the rest of the recommendations.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Soft-spoken. Okay. As Dennis said, we have had a lot of meetings, and I'm really happy this evening to present our recommendations. The Park Commission is recommending a half-cent sales tax with no sunset. That sales tax would fund construction of the community center. It will provide money to take care of the maintenance needs, not only today, but the ones from yesterday and the ones for tomorrow, because we have a need there. It will develop the undeveloped parkland that we currently own, and will acquire additional parkland in future years. We're recommending that the ballot issue be placed on the November 5 ballot. Currently, there are no competing issues, so we're hoping to get in before anybody else. And if approved, the Park Commission will provide the oversight on how those funds are used. Here's how it breaks down. The recommended funding, $2 million annually to pay off the debt of the community center for construction, and that would include a reserve account for operating maintenance. The park maintenance expansion at $620,000 annually includes money for trails, park improvements, operations, and deferred maintenance and expansion. We'll go into more detail on these. Senior services at $150,000, performing and visual arts at $50,000, scholarship assistance, and that's to help with people that are less fortunate to be able to participate as well, and that's at $30,000 annually, and a sales tax fund balance, another reserve, at $150,000, for a total of estimated $3 million a year, which is what we estimate the half-cent sales tax will provide. Construction estimated for the community center is $35 million. We do include roughly $4.5 million on a contingency fund for the construction, and that is a 30-year payback based on 3% interest rate, which is what Christine has provided for us. Timeline. Estimated construction timeline for the- Timeline, estimated construction timeline for the community center, if approved, on the November 5th ballot. January 2014 RFQs for architectural services, April 2014, award the architecture firm contract, December 14 bid construction, February 2015, award the contractor construction, and July 2016 would be the anticipated opening. The community center operating maintenance reserve fund. Initial funding would come from the construction savings if available. That reserve contingency fund, if there's money left from that, we would immediately fund an operating maintenance reserve fund. If not, it would be funded to a maximum, excuse me, level of two hundred thousand annually until it reaches the level that has been identified. And what we're recommending on that is one point two five million. Once it's reached that, that would not be continued to be funded unless money comes out of it, and then it would be funded again to maintain that reserve amount. Senior services allocating a hundred and fifty thousand annually to senior services. Potential for that includes improvements to Vesper Hall, enhanced transportation for senior services, additional senior programming, and additional meals. Performing and visual arts, we're recommending an additional ten thousand to the Public Art Commission, ten thousand dollars to the Blue Springs City Theater, and a thirty thousand dollar maintenance or grant fund that can be applied for to maintain the art that's currently owned in the city, and also to provide opportunities to purchase new art. Scholarship assistance, this is to assist two different categories. Half would go to community center membership, where people that do not have the funds to participate otherwise would be able to, and the other half would go to parks and recreation programs. Recommending would be evaluated annually to see how that is working and whether the levels are appropriate. Park maintenance and improvements, as Dennis mentioned, we currently have a little over fifteen million in deferred maintenance, so our recommendation is that gets on the plan right away. Trail maintenance at a hundred thousand, park operations to offset costs associated with reduced sports league charges, annual unidentified park improvements funded at a hundred thousand, and the deferred maintenance projects currently at three hundred and twenty thousand. Future park maintenance and improvements, future park land development, developing future park amenities. Priorities for the first five years is the deferred maintenance. And then, at that point, evaluating annually to see what can we do from there, because at some point you have to start setting aside money for future park development. Sales tax contingency fund, allocating five percent annually until the fund is built up to fifteen percent of the estimated tax receipts. Again, if there's money left from the contingency fund, this could be funded right away. Otherwise, it would be based on a hundred and fifty thousand until we reach the four fifty and maintain that four fifty balance. So what we're requesting and recommending to you this evening is that a half-cent sales tax dedicated for parks is put before the residents on a November 5th ballot, specifically funding the community center construction, operation and maintenance fund, park maintenance and improvements, senior services, performing arts and public art, scholarship assistance, and a fund reserve balance fund. And I'll stand for questions.
Are there any questions from the council? Councilman Carter?
Well, it's time for our community to decide what kind of community it wants to be.
Very true.
And this is a great opportunity for us to do that. Through no fault of our Parks Commission, our parks are skating the wrong way. You only skate one way in life, either skate the right way or the wrong way, and we're skating the wrong way. I support this, but the beauty of our system is we're going to turn it over to the voters and let them decide what kind of community they want. We're going through the comprehensive plan review right now, and the citizens who've been involved there say they want us to be a top-tier community. One of the great things about a top-tier community is great parks. We just have to find a way to pay for it. And right now, you're in the back of the line on the general fund, and it's like, we do what we need, do what we need, do what we need, then what do we want? We don't have money left over for want, and this gives us an opportunity, you know, for the wants in life. So I congratulate you and the Parks Commission for this wonderful plan, and urge my colleagues to put it on the ballot and let the voters decide what kind of community they want.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Johnson?
Your Honor, I just want to thank Deana and the members of the park commission and the park staff for their diligent work and responding to the council's request to bring this forward. And it's a, I think it's a tremendous package, and it is forward-thinking, it addresses day-to-day tactical needs, but it also is very strategic in looking forward over the next thirty-plus years for our community. But I think we'd be remiss, I mean, when you look at and not acknowledging the great work of former, you know, park and rector director Roscoe Ryder and other commissioners who have served this community for many years and have put Blue Springs on the map without a dedicated funding source. And to think about the creativity and ingenuity of the staff and all the other people who, day in and day out, who have continued to see their budgets shrink, but the expectations have continuously escalated. And when you look at our park systems and if you think to yourself what's been done in this community over the past thirty to thirty-five or forty years, and the construction of Hidden Valley Park, and the construction of Lake Remembrance, and the development of going after grants, we all know grant funding is shrinking and drying up, and that it's becoming increasingly more challenging to get our hands on those funds. We were fortunate to get a grant that helped us deliver a very nice landscaped amenity at Adams Dairy Parkway and I-70. However, with a shrinking operational budget, we have been challenged to maintain and take care of that amenity. We're now putting in beautiful landscaping on Woods Chapel, and it's going to transform that corridor and be beautiful, but that's going to put a huge impact on our park staff to find funds in their existing operational sources and funding. In a little bit, you're going to hear a presentation about a CIP proposal for the next six years. And for the next six years, that CIP is proposing, I believe it's one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our park program, and that goes for dredging a lake. Those types of resources or allocations or programming won't move our park program forward. And so I urge the city council to allow the voters to take a serious look at this and to, again, appreciate the good work of all the men and women who have brought us this far, who have contributed to the programs that we have today, but now give us the opportunity to make a statement for our future. I'll get off my soapbox.
I want to echo the comments that have already been made. Plus, I want to commend the park commission for your vetting of this issue in very quick order. We gave that to you April 29th, and here you are back June 17th with a recommendation. So you have to put some extra time in and effort to make that happen. I also commend the citizens of Blue Springs because we've addressed needs that will keep us a top-tier city in the state of Missouri, and I would say in the nation. In 2008, we had infrastructure needs, and the citizens spoke with an eighty-four percent approval on the sewer system and an eighty-one percent approval rate on road improvements. It was at 2011, we addressed public safety. The voters approved that with a sixty percent voter approval rate. And I said in my State of the City address two years ago, now it's time to talk about quality of life. And that's what we're doing. We're talking about quality of life, and we're giving the citizens the opportunity to do it. Don't let it be said that we're sitting here dictating, no, this is what we're going to have. What we're doing is giving the citizens an opportunity. And I'm confident that the citizens of this community want this to be a top tier, as indicated with the comprehensive plan that's being studied now, and all the citizen surveys that we get is very strong and that people want a good quality of life. You want to be able to sit back and enjoy your community. And I think we're addressing those. So that being said, without objection, unless someone has something to say, without objection, we would have staff prepare the necessary documents to bring back.
Your Honor, and just to make sure everybody saw it in the packet, we did include a sample ordinance of what would be before you on the ballot language, so it is in your packet. It was made available, it's on our website. And we, of course, have a municipal election in April of 2014, so this would be an extraordinary expense that we would fund in the budget. We've already talked internally about how we would come up with the funds to handle that election expense in November, but we are fully prepared to execute and go forward with that if that's the will of council.
And if you, the voters approve, if, put it on the ballot, the voters approve it, in November, we actually start collecting the funds in April. I've verified that already. So, unless there are other comments, without objection, we will have the documents presented at the appropriate time.
We actually will bring that forward fairly quickly. The November election needs to be certified in August, I believe August 19th is the last, or that's the council meeting, but we would bring that to you sooner so that we could go ahead and work with the park commission and other appropriate entities to begin the processes of going forward with an educational and informational package for our citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, great presentation, so thank you for presenting that, Chairman and Park Director, and thank you, commissioners for coming, being a support for that and your hard work. I'm going to give you a round of applause. Okay, next item is a discussion on CDBG 2013-2014 Annual Action Plan. Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of council. Do have an opportunity to look at grant funds and how to spend them, and in fact, one of the recommended projects before you this evening is exactly one of those that was already mentioned in the previous agenda item regarding a playground service specifically for Blue Springs Park. So you can see some of the deferred maintenance and such that can be addressed through other grant funding opportunities, and they're pretty minimal when in relation to, excuse me, in relation to parks projects, but Blue Springs Park and Baumgartner Park are two that do have opportunity to utilize CDBG funds. So with that, council information formed before you this evening lists what staff is presenting as a, what we're calling again our Annual Action Plan Draft. It does need to be published for a thirty-day public comment period. That would be beginning this, this, actually, next Monday, excuse me, I thought it was yet this week, but actually, next Monday, June 24th, and concluding July 24th, and come before you at the first city council meeting in August, August 5th. Prove that Annual Action Plan Draft to, forward to HUD for their August 15th deadline. So that's kind of the timeline here. Appreciate everyone's patience as we go through the kind of public discussion period here, and this is the next step in that process. Again, this is simply to look at authorizing the publication of the draft Annual Action Plan with these six different projects before you. The first one on the list here is one I know has been discussed at length in some of the previous meetings, and that's the Downtown Facade Grant Program. Again, that was approved for a hundred thousand in the current fiscal year, and what we're looking at for this next fiscal year, we had originally put in a number of fifty thousand, now we're looking at only fifteen thousand, and we're kind of fashioning this similar to what was done with the minor home repair program several years ago, where we looked at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to start. There wasn't that, I guess, amount of funding that was being accessed by applicants, so we kind of scaled back to level it out to about thirty-five to fifty thousand per year. So we started high, then second year, we went really low and tried to level that out kind of in the middle. So that's kind of what we're looking at here. We have the large project with the America's Community Bank on the corner of 11th and Main, and looking at that as, again, it's a grant, but it's also essentially a cost-sharing financing tool of a hundred thousand dollars available this current fiscal year, and looking at just trying to seed that a little bit with fifteen thousand next year. Knowing that we do have some of these deferred maintenance projects, as was mentioned in the previous presentation, specifically for Blue Springs Park Playground Service, as you recall, one of the first projects that was tackled with CDBG funds back in 2006 was to replace the playground equipment at Blue Springs Park with new, modern, accessible equipment, and that was done with CDBG funds. And so we're looking at simply modifying the playground service to be more, more safe, more accessible, and that is looking at about a hundred thousand dollars or forty-seven percent of the total funding that's being proposed for this next year. Again, the estimated amount is two hundred and twelve thousand. I noticed some discussion as it be, as to that being lower because of sequestration. Actually, CDBG fund, CGBG program was, had increase in funding for this current federal fiscal year, and as a result, actually, we're seeing pretty much a stable funding amount for this year. So it has not gone down as we had originally anticipated, so we're about the same as last year, about two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So with that, you can see the six different programs or items, these have all been discussed before. Again, minor home repair program, like I mentioned, about fifty thousand dollars each year. That is being accessed and is certainly proving a benefit throughout the community. First-time homebuyers program is at thirty-six thousand. That's about where we're hitting twelve to thirteen applicants per year. Five thousand dollars to the Downtown Live group, they're looking at that as hopefully an annual budget funding source, and then CBG administration funds. So these are all certainly, there's some flexibility within all of these. Obviously, we can look at modifying these tonight if desired, but we want to do that, get your final review and direction before we publish the draft with these items next Monday. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Yes, Your Honor. Real quick on one topic, the minor home repair program. I think I heard in previous conversations, staff say this year, we've opened up the application period to be the full year.
Yes.
Although it's triggered at, you know, certain increments within that year, but still, you're receiving applications year-round.
Yes, yes, we are.
Good.
Yes, and we've, we have gotten a few since, again, the application deadline typically is the end of January or end of February, and we've gotten a few through the spring here. So they're waiting, either program applicants fall out later on in the year, don't take advantage of that, even though they applied for it and were approved, or we just carry them over to the next fiscal year. So, yeah, we've been getting really positive response on that. We had had a few that were going to court, able to turn it over through the minor home repair program, and are seeing some changes to their properties in a positive manner. So actually, we're seeing some repeat applicants, because it's only, it's capped at five thousand dollars, and they're coming back to finish up kind of the next level of repairs, which has been really a positive for the neighborhoods that they're impacting.
I appreciate staff for working with it and working with the minor home repair program. I know that's a lot of work, and I know that the money's in here that helped fund part of that, surely doesn't cover all the work that goes into that, so.
Doesn't catch on, yeah, I appreciate that. And again, it's not just community development, we kind of, the frontline staff for that, but finance department's involved quite a bit as well on the backend, a lot of the processing of information as well.
The next, I've got a couple pictures that I wanted to show the council relative to CDBG funding and everything, and these are not very far away from here, they're in the downtown vicinity. This is a picture of a sidewalk, you know, that's just broken up, go to the next picture, and that's a picture of it looking kind of at downtown, that's 15th and Main there, looking back to the east. Next slide, more of the same busted-up sidewalk, and another house right there with another busted-up sidewalk. Next slide, here's kind of the road conditions in some of those areas with the asphalt overlay. Next slide, busted up and need an overlay, next one. This is needing overlay, but if you look off to the, it's underneath the shade, slightly off right center, there's, that's the historic preservation that you're going into the historic area of Blue Springs. So, I think that's all. So I think that's all the slides, is that it?
Yep.
The reason I bring that up is I'm very happy with the CDBG funds. Over the years, look at what it's done for the public improvements downtown with new curbs, new sidewalks, streetlights. Things are looking very good as far as public infrastructure and the improvements in the last few years. CDBG funds is really, you know, provided by the Housing and Urban Development, HUD Funding, and it's to, they review a community for how much low-income family that you have, and they dedicate, allocate money to that community to be spent to help out in those neighborhoods, eliminate blight. And while we've done a good job with downtown, we seem to be ignoring those public safety issues relative to sidewalks and street infrastructure and even stormwater maintenance. That can be considered public safety as well. Two children died in my district in my tenure relative to stormwater improvements. And I think that we should go farther than to take money away from those low-income families, low-end senior, senior housing-type individuals and giving it to private for-profit businesses downtown. I think that we overstep and cross from, from using the money for public improvements and low-income families. When we give it to a business, that concerns me, and I think we've gone too far with this facade program. I'd encourage that $15,000 to be go and fix sidewalks or do asphalt overlay. I think it would have helped those residents' property values and public safety more than giving it to a, to a private business downtown. So that's my concern.
Any other comments, questions?
Your Honor, if I may, and Councilman Fowler, I appreciate your comments and, and some of the sidewalk improvements. If you've all been down Vesper Street, you see one of our latest projects and what it's done. And the dental office down there just finished their landscaping. I think that was last weekend, I believe.
Pretty recently.
Just real recently, and, and that area is really looking good. And a lot of the residents are making use of those sidewalks, so I think that's been well-spent. In relationship to the facade program, I just want to point out and remind people that those are matching grants.
Yes.
That when you throw out $15,000, you're really talking $30,000 worth of improvements to downtown. And, and that has been higher on the, on our citizen survey that, that we really concentrate on trying to keep downtown and restore downtown and bring it back. So a lot of times when we look at some of these monies, we have to realize that those for-profit businesses are putting some of their money back into this thing to try to improve the area, to make it look good. Those areas bring up property value, they raise the ship on everybody as far as their value of their property and what they own. And I know this council did set aside monies for sidewalks. We are trying to deal with the sidewalks in the area. Councilman Levessy came forward with that and got that going. We do have our road improvement programs, and we set aside money for that, to improve road improvements. And we, we're ahead of schedule. I believe Chris Sandy will tell you, we're still ahead of schedule even though we've tried to carve off a little bit of that money for sidewalks. So we are addressing some of these issues that, that are out there, and some of those issues are longstanding, and we're, we're in the effort to try to, to correct those over the long haul. I think we should still stay true to course on these facade programs and make some improvements of downtown, to restore the downtown to, to something that we would all be proud of, not only those for-profit businesses, but also for the citizens of Blue Springs as a whole, because they've indicated that they want the downtown to improve. That's my so box.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none. That pretty much concludes the discussion on it. We do have an exit resolution granting approval to publish the draft 2013-2014 CDBG, CDBG Action, Annual Action Plan that includes the funding for the different projects that have been done.
That's correct, Your Honor. This resolution would support the funding levels that you have received in your packet tonight. So it would be in order, if there was going to be a change, changing those, there would be an amendment that would need to be made.
Are there any amendments before we alter it?
Sure, Your Honor. I'll make a motion to amend to replace the facade money with public infrastructure of sidewalks and street maintenance.
There is a motion, you veritied, to replace the funds for the facade program to be diverted to sidewalks. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Is there a motion to approve the Annual Action Plan?
Your Honor, if I may. I would like to have item number five voted on separately. As a member of the board for Downtown Alive, I think it would be inappropriate for me to vote on that particular line item.
Which one? Not exactly sure how to accomplish that because the, the resolution, Mr. McDonald, do you have some thoughts on how we want to do this? Because the resolution just supports the entire action plan, and the action plan is being presented in totality. So I, do you have some thoughts on how you would?
Resolution could be, in a sense, split in two, and the resolution could be that that be taken out and then somebody, if somebody wanted to pass that, they could make a motion just to pass that, put that in the action plan, and it could be voted on by the council with, I assume Councilman Culpepper's going to abstain because of this situation.
Yes, sir, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, so I will accept a motion to approve the Annual Action Plan, except item five. Is there a motion for that?
So moved, Your Honor.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Okay. So now, yeah, so now we need a motion to approve item five on the Annual Action Plan.
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Wow, we got through that.
And just to keep track, that one passed four to zero. Okay.
Show, show Councilman.
One absent and one abstained.
Culpepper abstaining. Right. Okay. Next, we have an introduction reading of Bill 4257, approving the park ordinance. Now, for those, as a reminder, the park commission had brought forth an ordinance that there was concern expressed on two items, one by Councilman Quabell and one by Councilman Edmondson. And they have addressed that and come back with a recommendation. Those recommendations to your satisfaction?
Yes, and I would like to introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill number 4256, an ordinance adding a new title, Title IX Parks to the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Councilman Quabell.
Your Honor, I want to talk one more time about the section of the ordinance that deals with the carrying of firearms in our parks. I want to start by thanking the planning commission for their very diligent and thorough discussion on that issue. And I wanted to state publicly that while I do not support the section on that, even with the amendment that's been proposed, I did comment publicly to the planning commission that I thought that they were presenting a good compromise for the council to consider. My personal opinion, and I have since the last council meeting, spent quite a bit of time talking with constituents on this issue, is that there is no consensus in our community as to what the right solution to this is. We know that it's not really addressing an existing problem. We know that we are attempting to regulate a lawful activity, thereby potentially making a standard law-abiding citizen not being lawful simply because they choose to carry a firearm in our parks. We don't have a problem with that in our parks, as I understand it. And so, again, I think this is a good compromise in principle, but I'm going to, I want to hear what the rest of the council has to say about it frankly, before I decide whether I, I make a motion to amend or whether I just vote no on the ordinance as a whole. I haven't made my mind up about that yet. But I think it is, I think it's a section of this particular ordinance, of this particular ordinance that's not really necessary in order to accomplish the goals that we say we're trying to accomplish. The rest of the ordinance, I think, is excellent. I think the amendments on the other issues that are proposed tonight are excellent. They very much address it. And again, I just want to thank the plan, the Parks Commission for, for their diligence on talking about this amongst themselves and for listening to my personal concerns. And with that said, Your Honor, I'll let the mic go.
Councilman Clark.
I too would like to thank the Parks Commission for taking these three issues back and deliberating them a little bit more. I take an opposite view, Councilman Quabell, on the issue. And, and I spend a lot of time talking about it as well, because there is no consensus on it. There's really no right or wrong answer. I talked to Mr. McDonald about it, and he pointed out to me that in this building, you're not allowed to have a firearm. But as we sit here in a council meeting, we have Chief McCoy, there's an officer in the back, there's a couple of others that come in and out, I feel very safe here. Now, if we're going to put police officers in all of our parks to protect our citizens, I don't think we need to have people carry guns if they have a concealed carry permit. We're not going to do that. And if we're going to abrogate the citizens' right to self-protection, it's incumbent upon us to protect them. And we're basically presenting our parks, if we don't do this, as a soft target. And I'll give you two examples, Aurora, Colorado and Newtown, Connecticut. Those people went in and did that because they were soft targets. That movie theater in Aurora said, "No firearms." So the guy knew he could go in there and shoot the place up. The guy in Connecticut, the schools were no-gun zones. He knew he could go in there, kick the door in, and shoot it up and, and get his mission accomplished. I would like the criminal element that comes to Blue Springs, first of all, I hope they don't, but when the criminal element comes to Blue Springs, I want them to have a little doubt in their mind. When they go into a park, I want them to doubt whether, you know, Deana McLean's got a purse, wonder if she's got a little Derringer in there. She might, I don't know. I want them to have that doubt, so that's why I come down on that side of it.
Well, actually, if I understand, if I may, Your Honor.
Yes.
We're on the same side on this, just with slight variation, because if we do not pass this particular provision in the ordinance, we have exactly what you said, which is Missouri citizens having the lawful right to walk in our parks, carry openly or concealed, and therefore, in some cases, there might not be doubt, and in other cases, there would absolutely be doubt. So I would say we agree on, on that point. Where I differentiate the two is whether or not we're denying citizens who don't have CCW permits the right to defend themselves if they feel they have a need to. And again, we don't feel we have a need to in this community. The people who felt that this was perfectly okay, a lot of them I talked to, one of the reasons they thought it was okay is because it didn't affect them. They feel safe in our parks, they don't feel the need. But under the Constitution of the United States, we have a right to carry, under the, under the statutes of the State of Missouri, in an outdoor public setting, we have a right to either carry openly or to get a permit to carry concealed. And we are, I had a constituent today say to me that the question we should be asking ourselves, and this is a person who pretty much is in favor of gun control, they said the question we should be asking ourselves is, are we trumping state law in an open, public, large space? We're not talking about a small confined building now, we're talking about large, open green spaces in our city, where everywhere else in our city, if the citizen wants to, he can carry a pistol on his hip in plain sight, whether he has a permit or not. Or he can carry, he or she can carry one concealed if they have an appropriate permit. And the part where I've had difficulty in processing this is, we talked about these ordinances giving our police officers a tool to manage problems in our parks. But I don't really think this provision, no matter how we do it, whether we do it the way it was originally presented to us or not, really gives our police department any additional tools, because if the citizen is behaving lawfully, as they should, there is no problem. If they're behaving unlawfully, we already have laws in place to deal with those situations. So what we're doing here is regulating a lawful activity and making it unlawful, even though that, the citizen involved may not, you know, have any unlawful intent. So that's the reason why I will either vote no on this or, or propose an amendment. Thank you.
Any other comments, Councilman Fowler?
Yeah, Your Honor, let's just, I guess, go to one of our larger parks and do a hypothetical here. So that is Adams Point Golf Course. There's outside, but then there's also a facility there, and it's got right now a sign that says that you can't carry inside of a city-owned building. So which ordinance is going to rule? How does that?
As you correctly stated, we already have an ordinance that requires that you not carry in a city-owned building unless you're a peace officer.
And so that.
That would rule. So if you, if you didn't pass this ordinance, you could carry outside, but you couldn't take it into the building. If you pass this ordinance the way it's written now, all you could do is carry concealed with a permit.
Outside. You still wouldn't be allowed inside. Even though it's a parks facility, that first ordinance would carry it.
Yeah, yeah, because it's, it's separately specific to built, city buildings.
Okay.
Which poses a question for me. What's the enforcement?
Basically, the enforcement is you're first asked to take your weapon outside.
Right. So the only thing you can do is ask me to leave?
That's correct.
If you see it.
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I didn't vote on that ordinance.
Your Honor, this is the first I've heard Councilman Quabell's concern. I, if you were going to submit an amendment, what would it be? What, go ahead and articulate that.
My, my amendment basically would be that this issue is already dealt with adequately in my mind in state and federal law, and that we would simply remove that section from the, from the ordinance.
Okay. Would you like to make that into a motion? Or have you decided?
Well.
What, what do you want to do?
If the council would like to at least have the opportunity to vote on it, I'd be happy to make it a motion.
Okay. And the motion is?
I'm not sure I can tell from everybody's.
To, to remove that section from the proposed ordinance. Dealing with concealed, dealing with firearms.
The section is 910.010, if anybody wants to look at it. It, it deals with possession of firearms and projectile shooting devices. It, it does preclude shooting in the park. No person, well, it's got two sections.
So we'd have, we'd have to break that down, and else we definitely don't want them shooting in the park.
Although, is it not true that it's unlawful to discharge a firearm within the city limits?
Exactly, that's already on the books. Right?
That is true.
Yeah.
So the whole, the whole thing, if, if, if you make a motion to remove section 910.010, basically, it takes us back to where we are before.
For existing ordinance that's on the books right now.
Your Honor, if I could take some mystery out of all this, I would support Councilman Quabell's amendment.
So is that a second?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to remove that section from the.
He didn't make a motion, he was trying to read the tea leaves first.
Okay, is that a motion or tea leaves?
I will make a motion. We'll, we'll let it be voted on, upper down, it's fine.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We've had some discussion already, but is there further discussion? Councilman Fowler.
Could, if we could have our attorney read that, be that what we're talking about, removing there, that, that paragraph? Because I guess my question would be, since it's, the section shall not prohibit, just by removing the language, if it doesn't prohibit, we're not doing anything anyway.
If the whole section is removed that prohibits possession of firearms and, and shooting firearms in the park, we'll be left with a situation where we already currently have an ordinance that precludes shooting in.
Shooting, but I guess I'm saying that about the conceal and carry. Wouldn't it be?
We don't have anything that makes it illegal to carry a revolver, a pistol, or a weapon in the park, so we go back to that. You still couldn't carry it into Adams Point.
Right, that's building. But, but this paragraph doesn't say, doesn't take that right away. It says, "This section shall not prohibit any person in the city from carrying concealed firearm if the person has a valid conceal and carry endorsement, et cetera." So by not prohibiting it, we're not doing anything, not regulating.
I think Councilman Quabell's making the distinction that you can openly carry now. You don't have to have a concealed. You don't have to have a concealed to carry. You can walk into a city park, you can walk down right out there in front of the building carrying a revolver on your hip as long as it's not concealed.
Right, right. Okay. So, but since, yeah, it starts out with, "This section shall not prohibit anybody from using a conceal and carry."
Well, no, but we're just going to get rid of the whole thing.
But it doesn't say that you, I mean, it doesn't address the other portion of what you just said, one way or the other.
That's right. You have to know that it's legal to do that.
Okay. So...
So we divert it back to existing laws?
Yeah.
Right.
We just go back and divert to existing law. And existing law in Blue Springs is in buildings owned by the city or in buildings that have been posted by an owner, you can't carry any weapon.
Your honor?
Yes.
Which I might add is consistent with the state statute.
Right.
Yes.
The fact that we are able to do that at all is because the state statute gives us the ability to.
Yes, and actually, because we own the park, we could do it there too.
Okay.
I mean, it's all different situation, but because of the state law, you have the authority to do that, you don't have to.
Okay.
Okay, unless there's further discussion, we have a motion and a second to remove that section from the ordinance, from the ordinance. I'm saying from the audience, but from the ordinance. Okay, you ready to vote?
Yes, sir. On a minute?
Only a minute?
Yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All in, same sign? Motion carries, that section is removed. Now we'll accept a motion to...
Approve first reading as amended.
Yes, first reading as amended.
So moved?
Well, we already had the motion, right?
You've had the first reading, and now you need a motion to, you need to vote.
Right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All in, same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4256 as amended, an ordinance adding a new title, Title IX, Parks, to the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on a second reading and sign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
I doubt if there is discussion, but there is there any? Roll call, please.
Councilman, Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4434.
Next, we have a discussion on the fiscal year 2013, 2014 to 2018, 2019 Capital Improvement Program. Mr. Hawley?
Thank you. This really ought to be pretty simple compared to that last item. Again, yes, this is the 2013, 2014, 2018, 2019 Capital Improvements Program. And I don't know how many of you saw the piping out by Greg Grounds Lake, but that's probably the artsiest picture I took for this capital improvement program. Like to start out by thanking the city council members, Councilman Carter and Councilman Lovese, Councilman Culpepper, for their participation in the CIP Review Committee this year. We changed a little bit. In the past, we've had a rating committee where we've asked our members to actually go through and rate projects because our capital improvement program is really focused a lot on maintenance, and there just isn't a lot of leeway. That seemed like an exercise that wasn't, didn't have a good value return to it for the time that was being spent on it. So I'm saying that for encouragement next year for the council members that will be on the committee. I believe we'll probably have a review committee as well, it's a little less work. Planning Commissioners Trozen and Banks were also on this year's review committee, and Parks Commissioner DeBert, who is he still here?
He just left.
I'd like to thank him as well. The staff involved, obviously, thanks to them, and particularly the finance department, who really does a good portion of the work on this particular, on the CIP program. It's a budgeting device, and we have a great finance department. I feel pretty fortunate to work with them on this. CIP is being submitted in accordance with the city's charter. The 2013, 14, 18, 19 projects and budget are consistent with past CIP budgets and the directives provided by the city council. No change in our projects. They are again grouped into funded and unfunded projects. I think we started this about four years ago and have continued, and it seems to be working well as a good way to put projects forward. The majority of projects provided this year are maintenance, rehabilitation, or equipment replacement, and I think you'll see that as we go through the 2013, 14 budget and projects. The total budget, including the funded and the unfunded projects, for the six-year period is $171.2 million. By comparison, you can see the 2012 and the 2011 total budgets. The funded projects for the six-year period is $24.7 million, and it represents approximately 14.4 percent of the total six-year budget, and that would include both funded and the unfunded. Total cost of the unfunded projects for the six-year period is $146.5 million, and the project proposed to be funded for the 2013, 14 budget year is approximately $2.7 million, and it represents 11 percent of the total funded projects for the entire six-year CIP. This is a good breakdown, kind of shows you how our 2013, 2014 CIP budget is divided and how those funds are utilized. Total number of projects that are proposed in the next six years for the entire CIP is 90, and 16 of those are proposed to be funded in the six-year CIP. 74 projects are unfunded. The projects carried forward from last year, replacement of the city hall roof, replacement of two HVAC units. We've had some emergency replacement that has gone on with those two HVAC units, but they are in fact in the 2013, 14 budget year. Community development block ramp program is back in the budget. Last year it was, those funds were set aside for the facade program this year, and again, throughout the six-year budget, those funds are back in. Drudging of Lake Rotary Park, I think our city manager mentioned that a bit earlier, as being the parks project, that really, very necessary project, but in fact, doesn't move us forward in some ways on parks. Equipment replacement is snowplow dump truck, the street difference project. Then we have the Northeast Napoleon Drive, that is the extension of Northeast Napoleon Drive to the east side of Adams Dairy Parkway to service the community center and the Missouri Innovation Park. Sanitary sewer citywide maintenance, again, another piece of equipment with the vacuum truck, and then water main maintenance and the water tank maintenance. And this is the Vesper Street Sidewalk that I think was discussed earlier. There has been some landscape additions since this picture was taken, but it did come out well, and it is utilized fairly heavily, so good project. The proposed projects for the, for this six-year CIP, all projects that were proposed were unfunded. The comprehensive plan update is looking forward. I know we are doing the comprehensive plan update right now, so many of you may wonder, well, how is the comprehensive plan update in there? Well, every five years, we, the charter says that we are to look at the comprehensive plan for updates, so we are looking at the year 2019, 2020 as possibly the next time that the comprehensive plan is updated, so that was put in the list of unfunded. Upgrading MS Govern or the GEMS program to the Enterprise, if you have questions about that, our IT director is here, and I think he can talk to you, but it's basically updating our software that's essential to the accounting, payroll, utility building, and so on. ITO4, the Intergov E-Plan Review. We've recently moved to Enterprise platform with our Intergov tracking system. The E-Plan Review software is the software that allows us to actually accept plans via the internet and review those plans, transfer information back and forth between the developer or architect and city staff. The retaining wall at the Pink Hill baseball fields, this project is to replace a deteriorating retaining wall. If any of you have been out to Pink Hill, near the Parks Building, I'm sure you've seen that retaining wall, and certainly is a need. We're replacing a shelter house in Pink Hill Park, number three. That's pretty self-explanatory, as are the tennis court repairs, but the, one interesting point of the tennis court repairs is to Youngham, Mom Gardner Parks, is that that is a project that is being done in cooperation with the school district, and the school district has agreed to cover 50 percent of the project costs. The $295 that is shown in our budget is 50 percent, so the school district then would be adding 295 as well to that, to fix those tennis courts. Park trail pavement management, as you know, the Parks Department is responsible for a lot of trails and pedestrian pavement. Their, this particular project is looking at doing some maintenance and providing a maintenance fund and program for the trail and pavement maintenance. The Parks and Open Space Comprehensive Plan is exactly that. It's a preparing comprehensive plan for the parks and recreation needs within the community. This project, I didn't list each one individually, but PR 50 through PR 66 are all deferred parks maintenance citywide, and this comes from the study that I think was mentioned earlier. We've, the Parks Department has looked, has had a study done that looked at each individual park and the trails and determined what the maintenance, deferred maintenance needs were within those parks, and provided the document that shows those, and with that, then they developed these projects. The total cost of just those projects alone is $11.87 million, that's a sizable amount of deferred maintenance that needs to be done. Wanted to give you a brief update on the Woodschapel Road project. Obviously, this is not in the CIP this year, nor was it last. It was from the bond issue, but I thought it would be informative to give just a quick update and kind of let you know what the status of that is. So with that, I will turn it over to our Public Works interim director, Chris Sandy.
Good evening. I hope that you've all had the opportunity to take a drive down Woodschapel Road and see the progress that we're making. Everything south of, effectively, King's Church Drive is in place. We have a few signal items to work with, a few streetlights to put up. Things are moving on, moving ahead well. In the coming weeks, probably two to three, you will notice that the traffic will shift from the west side of the bridge to the east side of the bridge. That will facilitate the deck to be recoded and the contract, or the concrete replaced from Jefferson Street to South Outer Road, building the new lanes and new driving surface. I do encourage anyone watching on TV to take note that this will still be a congested area for about the next six weeks, and if you can find an alternate route to use, possibly using Little Blue Parkway or Seven Highway, we would appreciate it just to keep the area a little bit safer. Hopefully, by September, the entire project will be complete, substantially complete. I mean, we'll still have some landscaping to do and some final touches to put on it, but the DDI will be, the diverging diamond interchange will be up and running and available for use, and the orange barrels will go away, which will make everybody on the west side of town very happy.
Questions? If I may do a comment real quick, and I do periodically get over there, I know staff does that on a regular basis, but it really is starting to look good. I mean, it really is starting to look, the fence down along Woodschapel, the new pillars they put up, makes that look like an upscale neighborhood as you're driving through there. If you're not used to being, if you come from out of town, or you're from a different area of town, and you drive down Woodschapel for maybe the first time in a while, it just completely changes the look of that area. And then with the new development right there at the corner of Valley View, that going up, that whole area, as you say, by the time we get this thing done, it's just going to completely change the look of that area, and really looks good. I can't go on about how well it is, but it really does look good. I encourage, and I know you don't want to do it now, but somewhere along the line, people need to go over there and cruise through there and just, you know, look at what it's done, what we've changed in this area.
Very well stated. Councilman Carter?
Mr. Hawley, would you go back one slide? I just want to make a point for everybody watching at home. That's PR 50 to PR 66, almost $12 million, and it's not likely that you're going to find a funding source for that in the CIP, correct?
That's correct.
Right. Which gets back to the need for a dedicated parks tax and what kind of community we want to be moving forward, and we're going to give the voters an opportunity to make that decision next November. But as you look at this at home, I mean, think about what kinds of parks you want to have. We don't have the money, and we're not likely to have the money in the regular CIP.
Right. And again, these are just deferred maintenance, so...
Right.
That's not moving forward.
Quality of life.
Only catching up, so to speak.
Councilman Quabell?
Just one comment on the diverging diamond that I found interesting. I was over in that area the other evening, and just by a fluke of the traffic flow, it was at, because the traffic is right now going across the west side of the bridge, you actually could see a little bit of the effect of how traffic was flowing across the bridge and onto westbound I-70, as if the diverging diamond was already active, and it was pretty cool. Yeah, it was, the traffic was moving a whole lot better than it normally does.
In about two weeks, you'll feel it on the east side of the bridge.
Okay.
Moving forward, the public hearing notice was published on Saturday, June 15, and this item will be brought back to the city council, contrary to what is noted on the first page of the council information form. It will not be July 15, but rather July 1. So this, this will be brought for the public hearing and council adoption at the July 1 city council meeting. And because the 2013, 2014 budget is part of this city's annual budget, it is very helpful if we have any comments that the council sees within the capital improvements program. If those would be gotten back to staff, then they can be addressed in the budget process.
Councilman Fowler?
Yeah, I'd like to thank staff for all the work that they put into the CIP and also on Woodschapel. Woodschapel's looking very nice, no doubt about it. One of the things that I wanted to kind of highlight was that STO 06, the Street Rehabilitation The citizens may notice that, you know, that has been funded now for the last number of years, and people are getting new asphalt in front of their houses, but there's a, there's a big zero in this next coming year.
That's correct.
So next summer, there's not going to be that. But why don't staff talk about where that money is going to, and then, you know, how that's all going to play out real quick while we're on Woodschapel? And I got one more thing on that street rehab program, so...
Do you want to talk about that, or would you like me to talk about that?
Sure, I'll make comments very, very quick. The city had the opportunity to apply for and receive a $3 million grant through the Mid-America Regional Council that would allow for the expansion and continuation of the Woodschapel corridor improvement further south of the current improvement to Walnut. And in order to complete that work, it was necessary that we find matching funds in the budget, and in previous discussions with the city council, the city council agreed to a one-year deferring of the current street and sidewalk program, which is $2.5 million to provide that match for that project. So the funds are still going toward infrastructure and roads, but it will always be condensed to one particular project.
Right. Okay.
And the other thing on that STO 6 is that this is a multi-year document, and maybe my comments...
comments may not be applicable for this year, but in the future years, I hope, hopefully it show up like that. That is scheduled for $2.3 million from now till the year 2018 to 19.
That's correct. And it's a total, I think, of $11.7 million, $11.3 million.
Always, it started out at $2 million a number of years ago, then it went to $2.3, and it's, it's good to see, it keep up with economics. So, I'd like to see in the out years that it actually grow proportional to, you know, inflation, I guess, because I think we've gotten in trouble when we allow that to stay at a flat line while the cost of living continues to go up and asphalt goes up, so. Councilman Fowler, to respond to that. We do look at that, and in fact, in previous years, you may have observed a slight adjustment to that number going up, but one of the things that we desire to do for you and for the citizens is to provide you with a balanced budget, one that can be funded. And so, we're very cautious and conservative internally when we're preparing this document, is we don't want to show perhaps a $3 million number in 2018, but we're not able to fund it. It creates an expectation, but of course, that can be funded if you, if you change and you look at other programs or priorities that are in the budget. So, we do consider that. We take a conservative approach, and we want to make certain that what we're proposing to you, at least on the funded side, can in fact be implemented.
Any other comments?
Points well made, though.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. You have anything further, Ms. Fowler?
I do not. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, your honor, just two, two quick comments. In the proposed funded CIP, 95 percent of what you are being asked to consider and adopt goes toward infrastructure, and that infrastructure is streets, street equipment, water and sewer infrastructure. So, it's basic services, and I do want to call attention to the fact that we will be coming back to you either at the July 15 meeting or a following meeting. We are currently working on updating a water and sewer rate study. That work is ongoing now. The finance staff and Chris Sandy and the public work staff are looking at that, and we always put together a three-year proposal on what will happen to our water and sewer rates. As you know, a year ago, almost a year ago, the council gave staff direction and permission to begin working with Tri-County Water Authority on an additional water solution for our community, and in April, voters supported an initiative to move in that direction. We've not yet executed any agreements with Tri-County. Of course, the city council would have to approve those, but we thought it would be appropriate to give you an update on that project, the scope of that project, any changes that have occurred with regard to the scope or the budget over the last year, and in conjunction with the water and sewer rate study, we're carefully looking at the impact on those rates as it relates to that project. So, I just wanted to let you know, although it's not called out specifically in here, it is a big project. It's currently on the unfunded list, and there will be more to come at a future either council meeting or work session where we'll talk about it. Thank you.
Okay. That concludes the discussion on the CIP. That brings us to Merrill announcements, and I'm going to go straight to Thel Stupenda. Tonight's comes from Captain Eddie Rickenbecker. And I quote, "I can give you a six-word formula for success. Think things through, then follow through." End quote. Don't have any visitors appearance forms, but we do have an executive session to go into. So, we're going to accept a motion to go an executive session, and after that, we will take about two or three minutes to allow our guests to be excused, and then we will go into executive session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.